Okay, welcome to the city commission work session for twenty-three February two thousand and twenty-one. Now please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight's work session, we've got a couple of items, a update from Riley County Police Department, and the city budget, and we'll start with RCPD. And Director Butler, I guess, is going to do the presentation.
Yes, good evening. It's good to see you all. I'm gonna start out this evening with the handout that I gave you all before the start of the meeting. Recently, former Mayor Mike Dodson, who's now one of our Kansas representatives in the Kansas Legislature, made a request of me inquiring about the county crime rate compared with the state crime rate. And he did this in the context of a bill that was floating around that hadn't been introduced about abolishing the Riley County Police Department and replacing it with a sheriff's office. My understanding is this is not the first time a bill like that has been prepared and floated. I don't know the author, don't know the reason, but he asked for some information, Representative Dodson. So I took the liberty of also including a couple of columns, and I'll explain this to the listening audience. So I decided to include two counties that also have universities in the county. Populations are different, there's other differences. The other two main differences are these other counties have multiple law enforcement agencies. The Riley County Police Department has a county police department and then the campus police. So the easiest or the quickest way to interpret this data is if you look at the years, it goes from two thousand and three through two thousand and nineteen. The reason why we only went back to two thousand and three is because that's as far back as the KBI data goes that's available publicly, so that's where we started. And the last data that they have available was for two thousand and nineteen. So you'll see that the rates crimes reported per thousand people in that first column after the date is total crime, violent crime, and property crime. So violent and property crime are subsets of the total crime. So violent crime is pretty self-explanatory, things like rape, robbery, murder. Property crime, burglaries, thefts, auto thefts, things like that. So in the next column over, you'll see the heading that says state total. So that's the number of crimes reported per thousand residents for that year in the state. So that's the overall state average during those years. The next column over is Riley County crime. And the reason why that column is green and any other block that you see on this matrix is green means that their average or their numbers for that year were lower than the state. So this is not intended to be a comparison between us, Douglas, and Lyon County, but it does show their comparison with the state as well, if that makes sense. The significant thing to point out in this chart is every year from two thousand and three through two thousand and nineteen, the Riley County crime rate was lower than the state average overall and in both violent and property crime. And I think that's a significant statistic, and I have been sharing this with anybody who I get in front of because I think they would be interested in knowing how your county stacks up in terms of safety compared with the state average. So again, that entire column under Riley County is green for those years. You can see Douglas County, and then you can see Lyon County on the far right. At the bottom, there's some explanation about how the data was collected and how it should be interpreted. There is another chart that's referenced in the last paragraph. I didn't bring that with me, that really wasn't significant in terms of what I was trying to illustrate tonight. So I hope I explained that clearly to you, at least on the dais. Do you have any questions about the data that I've provided? Okay, very good. I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Hattasal here. So, um, so everybody did better in two thousand and nineteen. Is there any concern that there's less crime being reported here, there, anywhere? This isn't prosecutions or anything, it's not like there's any leeway. Either it's a crime or it's not a crime, I suppose. Is any off-the-top-of-your-head theories as to why two thousand and nineteen, everybody was better except the state?
No, there was no analysis done on that, but let me go back to the first part of your question, which is a significant question that a lot of people don't understand. That is, the Bureau of Justice Assistance, which is a department within the Department of Justice, every year surveys the country, it's a blind survey. And basically, it asks, have you been the victim of a crime and not reported it? Every jurisdiction in the country has unreported crime. To what extent, it's different depending on the state and the jurisdiction, the demographic. So the crime you're seeing listed here is crime reported. There's always unreported crime, and I can't tell you how much was unreported based on the data that I gave you tonight.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Other topics I wanted to brief you about is, and I briefed the law board on some of this last week, is we're doing a minor reorganization with our HR functions within the administration division. There's several people there that are performing different or disparate HR duties that really should be more organized and consolidated. So we are embarking on a plan to streamline those things and have it really reflect what I consider to be best practices in HR function. So that is ongoing, and it just started, and I just wanted to make you aware of that. Might give you an update later after we've gotten into it a little bit. Also, I received two weeks' notice of the retirement of Captain Hegarty. He was in charge of the Investigations Division. He has retired, his last day, I think, was February sixth. Currently, we have made a permanent transfer of Captain Aaron Friedline from the Support Division to the Investigations Division. And I hope by Friday, I will announce a new captain's promotion that will be the new Support Division Captain. We also have several ranks within Corrections and Sworn Ranks where we no longer have active promotion lists, and we have some vacancies in several of those ranks. So we have engaged the services of the International Association of Chiefs of Police to conduct an assessment center for five different ranks. That process should probably begin in late April or early May. And once that happens, then there'll be a few other promotions coming. Also, this year, two thousand and twenty-one, marks the thirtieth anniversary of the Riley County Police Department becoming accredited. It was first accredited in nineteen ninety-one. It was the first police department in Kansas to become accredited. It has remained accredited continuously during that time. In March last year is when we earned re-accreditation, but this is the thirtieth anniversary. We are working with our regional accreditation program manager and our PIO and others, and we're gonna have the chamber involved in holding some sort of event. We're probably going to wait until it's a little bit warmer, and we know we use these opportunities to educate our citizens and others about accreditation, why it's important, why it's important to maintain, and why it helps Riley County remain a safe community with a professionally-run police department. So more news will be coming on that as we develop the plan. Since I mentioned COVID, throughout the pandemic, the police department has had a total of thirty-five employees test positive for COVID. We currently have one active case. I, unless we have other new positives, they should be coming off of that sometime soon. Also, at the end of last week, all employees in the police department who were eligible in Phase Two of vaccinations, who wanted vaccines, received both. They received their second one at the end of last week. So hopefully, that will also help us with what we've been dealing with as we move forward. Those are all the things I have on my list to share with you, and I'll stand for any questions you have on this or any other topics.
Yeah, I just, thank you for the information. I think it's really good, the comparison here. Though, like you said, it's always come up in the, at least the times I've been on the law, on City Commission, several times where they wanted a sheriff to be elected instead of having the consolidated RCPD that we have currently. And I'm glad that Representative Dodson understands RCPD and was able to communicate with the rest of us about what's going on, and you giving him the stats as well. I think, I don't have a question for, but with Kansas State and their police officers and ours, do you see any kind of, I see sometimes an up, it seems to me an uptick, but it could just be your PIO is really good, about, you know, more burglaries or crimes that are happening that are not, not actually violent, but just crimes here and there.
Well, overall crime last year in two thousand and twenty was down. I think all statistical categories in the police department in future years are gonna have an asterisk next to it because of the pandemic. But overall, Part One crime was down, property crime overall was down, violent crime overall was down. There were a couple of categories that were up slightly, but overall, the crime rate was down. I think what you're referring to is we, we do publicize our crime, especially when we are looking for help from the public to solve it. And when we have property crime especially, thefts from cars, burglaries, they tend to occur in small areas in serial events in the same timeframe. So you'll have one or more people that'll go out in the middle of the night, and let's say they are trying to steal from cars, and they will just keep at it. They'll find one, then another, then another, and so we get those reports where it looks like crime's out of control when it's very isolated, and it happens, and then they move on. You don't see anything for a while. So we're not afraid to publicize the crime because we want people to know about it so they can protect themselves, number one. And number two, to enhance awareness, lock your car, hide your valuables, call us if you see suspicious people so we can come and investigate. So that's the purpose of publicizing it as heavily as we do.
Good, and my next question is, COVID among inmates. I don't, I don't hear much about it, but I, I just wanted a little bit of information on that.
Throughout the pandemic, we have had a total of four inmates test positive for COVID. None of them are currently incarcerated. We had a plan in place anticipating that happening, and when it did happen, we had enough space in our correctional facility where we could isolate those inmates from other inmates to prevent the spread. So I think if you look at what's happened in many other correctional facilities around the state, we did very well. Part of that was we had adequate space, we planned for it, and when it happened, we dealt with it. There were a couple of cases, I have to be candid, where the inmates were in on very low-level offenses. And so when we notified the judges and prosecutors of the situation, they would modify their bond so they could be released and not incarcerated there.
Sounds good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Butler, I just wanted to ask, there seems to be a big business in catalytic converter thefts. Is that a group that goes through town, or is that, is that, do those tend to be local perpetrators? What, what is the, there's some precious metal in them, I understand. But I don't, I wondered, who, who, who are the people doing, committing the thefts?
Well, if I knew, I wish you'd tell me who was doing it. But it's really a combination of the two, but primarily, it's, it's a group or organized group of people that go from city to city. And the reason why you've seen such a dramatic increase in these thefts is in the last twelve months, the price of palladium, which is one of the precious metals that is used in catalytic converters to clean the emissions, has more than quadrupled in price. A year ago, you could steal a catalytic converter and take it to a unscrupulous scrapyard, and you'd get a couple of hundred dollars for it. Depending on the vehicle, they can cut off a catalytic converter and take it to a scrapyard and get anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollars apiece. And cars like Toyota Priuses are prime targets. Because of their low emissions, they use more palladium in their catalytic converters, and the thieves know it. So they target those cars, they're very easy to steal. There's even a company that I came across that sells an aftermarket device they developed to bolt to the bottom of your car to block anybody with a sawzall from cutting your catalytic converter off. There's other mechanisms you can buy to protect yourself. But really, the driving factor is the cost of palladium. There's another precious metal, the name escapes me at the moment, but the cost of that has just skyrocketed.
I know that when a company has a fleet, sometimes they are, I saw where Swans, and I think there was another company that, that had five vehicles, however many, multiple vehicles, and usually big ones.
It's unfortunate because, especially with a private individual, like a Prius, if you took it to the dealer to get a new one put in, because it's part of the entire exhaust system, so they replace the whole thing, it's two thousand dollars.
Wow.
So people who don't have a lot of money, if their insurance is not in effect or they don't, if they have a high deductible, it's a big out-of-pocket expense. It really hurts people when this happens. So I have made sure our criminal intelligence unit shares this information with our officers so they can be on the lookout and educate people about this happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have two questions. One, and one's kind of about the hotspot study. I think George Mason was potentially publishing that, or, and maybe you've presented in other places, but I was just curious if there was a place that I could go to study that, or look at, read that, read through that, or if there, if that has been, if I just missed it. And then, go ahead if you have an answer to that one, because the other question's not related.
Well, we, we made a presentation to the law board, I can provide that to you. I don't believe the research has been published yet, but I will check with Captain Kyle. He was also involved in that, and he can let me know, and we'll share that with the commission if they would like to read it.
Was that at the last law, or was it a while back?
I believe it was either in October or November when we presented that report.
Okay, I'll go back and look at that. The other question is, alright, so there's, there's two potentially, this has to do, deal with marijuana reforms that are happening, happening in Topeka and happening at the federal level. And we're just kind of a microcosm in Manhattan anyway, because we have so many federal and state institutions and schools. I'm just wondering if any of that is on your radar and what, maybe what is the current attitude? As I know you have to enforce the laws they are, but as things are changing, and then what is, is there, are there, are there smarter people than me trying to figure out how this is going to work in a city like ours if they do pull the trigger on reclassifying or legalizing medicinal, or whatever it's gonna look like?
Well, I always hesitate to give my personal opinion, so I'm gonna pass on that right now. But I can tell you this, the Kansas Association of Chiefs of Police has a legislative committee. I'm a member of the legislative committee, and they have been active on this issue in the past. In concept, very basically, the KACP as a group is not opposed to medicinal marijuana that's properly regulated. What does that mean? This is the example that I use when I talk to people when they ask me this question. If you went to your doctor's office and you said, "This hurts," would the doctor point you to a bowl full of pills and say, "Just grab a handful of those and take them home, take as many as you like, take them as long as you like?" No, they would give you a measured dose, they would give you a prescription and tell you how much to take and how long to take it, and the prescription would have to be refilled. The KACP is in favor of medicinal marijuana in that regulatory concept, not in you buy weed from your neighbor down the street or you take it in any dose that you want because of a legitimate medical need. And we do believe there are legitimate medical uses that can help people in many ways. But to leave it unregulated, the KACP believes that it is just the camel nose in the tent to abuse and also an increase in use among juveniles. When I was meeting with legislators, not this year, but last year, we had a chart that was produced by another organization, a medical organization, I can't remember the name. It showed all fifty states in the country, and it showed the ones that had either legalized it for recreational use or medicinal use. And there were three columns of age groups of people, and one was juveniles, ages twelve to seventeen. Use among twelve- to seventeen-year-olds in Kansas at this time was ranked forty-fifth out of fifty-one states. If you look higher on the chart at states that had legalized it in some form, the rate of use among our youth was top five, top ten. So my, my point to my legislators was, is this what you want for Kansas? Because if you don't regulate it, or if you legalize it, this is what you're gonna see. I'm not talking about older people, I'm talking about young people who are still in development, brains are being developed, and what it can do to them if they abuse marijuana at that age. So that's really a long answer to your question, my personal view. You could probably weave a little bit into what I just told you the KACP's position is, but the bill in its current form, we're opposed to because it doesn't regulate it well enough.
I was gonna say, the Kansas, League of Kansas Municipalities has a legislative position on medical marijuana in here, in our, in this magazine we got today.
Okay, I wanna ask one, one question, which, if you could just, mostly for the audience out there, because people always get confused about Riley County Police Department, and of course, you've got to operate in Port au Potomac County. Why? Because the city is over on Port au Potomac County. And that's something I don't think people fully understand, and it gets the county sometimes, you know, concerned about budget, you know, because, you know, who's paying for it? And so could you just give us a quick rundown on how that works?
Well, it's interesting that you should ask because since I've been appointed, this has been a discussion I've been having with the previous sheriff, and I actually have an appointment with Sheriff Yeager to talk about this. Generally speaking, for the public, there's two classifications of crime, not property and violent, but felony and misdemeanor. We have always approached this where if there's a felony crime, we hope that the Potawatomi County Sheriff's Office will handle it because felony crimes are prosecuted in district court. Any felony crime that occurs in Potawatomi County has to be prosecuted in Westmoreland. So when you look at resources in terms of staff time, driving back and forth for trial preparation, court, you name it, it's a big burden for us to be going to Westmoreland on those felony cases. On misdemeanor cases and traffic cases, we believe we should be handling those because those are returnable to the Manhattan Municipal Court, which is more appropriate, in our opinion. There was an MOU in effect many years ago that I think is still in effect, but it really is lacking in detail on this and some other issues that I hope we can clarify with Sheriff Yeager. The one thing I want citizens to know is, when they're in the city of Manhattan that falls within Potawatomi County, they should never worry about who's gonna come, and once we get there, if we're gonna argue over who should be handling it. Captain Fink, who just retired, I would consider him a very wise man, used to say to our officers, "If you catch it, you clean it." So in other words, if you get there first, don't wait for somebody else to come and take it, because as a citizen, you don't care about that. And as a citizen, that's a disservice to you to have two law enforcement agencies bickering over who should handle their call. So sometimes we handle things that I believe should be handled by the sheriff's office, and maybe that happens, vice versa, I don't know. But when they call nine-one-one or the non-emergency number, whoever shows up first most often is going to handle the call no matter what classification it is, felony or misdemeanor.
Okay, and then, and then just to follow up, like, we have a, RCPD has an MOU with the University Police.
Who, who does?
With the University Police.
What's with the first acronym? I couldn't hear you.
A memorandum of understanding.
RCPD, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say RCPD, yes.
So, so I guess you've got that, so, so do you have something similar with Pot County? Or are you gonna try to renew it, work on it, or?
Well, as I mentioned, there is an existing document that was, in my opinion, not crafted thoroughly and properly, that I am discussing with Sheriff Yeager to see if we can improve it. We've already drafted something that we hope we can agree on. We continue to talk about it, haven't been able to reach an agreement yet, but we're working on it, and we're trying. So really, the idea is to clarify those division of responsibilities depending on what happens and where it happens. So I'm committed to, to getting us there, and hopefully, Sheriff Yeager will, he and I will be able to come to an agreement on this.
And then I have just one final request, because I wouldn't expect you to have any idea how to answer this tonight, but next time you update us, would it be possible to get some statistics on how much of your resources are expended in Potawatomi County? And the reason I ask that is, we've, I've had discussions with the two county commissions, and we talk about budgeting and who funds what, and, you know, sometimes, you know, they like to come out and say, "Well, we're spending too much time, you know, down at Walmart and different places like that." But I really have no data to, to, you know, analyze. And I don't know if you collect that, but it would be interesting to, to just say, you know, this is how much effort we put there, and this is the resources that we used. And don't try to go back, you know, several years, not really interested in that. Just a, you know, a reasonable period that you think would, would illustrate it. And then that will help us work out, you know, the issue of the budgeting, because as you know, it's split between the county and the city, and there's been discussions on that. And I would, I would just be interested in that piece of data to help us move that along a little bit.
I'll talk to my staff. We, we definitely can collect the numbers of calls we go on, either where we're requested or we initiate the call. We can also collect the categories of crimes, the type of crimes, and where they're happening. What we'll probably have to do is average the amount of time based on all of our calls for service for certain types of crime, and then apply that average to over there in, in Potawatomi County to give you an idea. It won't be exact, I don't think. The other thing, just in general, and I've been asked this question throughout my career, when developments are being planned or a building is being proposed, what will that do to police services? Generally speaking, what drives an increase in police or need for increased police resources is big-box retail. That generally requires more services than a small mom and pop or a residential neighborhood. Residential neighborhoods, for the most part, typically don't require a big increase in police resources, but retail does, light industry doesn't, heavy industry doesn't, generally. So that's, so we, we do spend a lot of time over there because of the retail proliferation of retail establishments over there.
And that'd be helpful, I think, because there's still that argument on the dark store theory. And, and of course, if Walmart and Benard's and all those people get their taxes lowered, but we're still having to shell out the same amount of money for, you know, police protection, which is needed, then that's a vital piece of information we could use too, so. So I'd appreciate that, but I don't wanna make, you know, excessive work. Hopefully, it can be pulled out without doing much, and then when we get the next update, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we'll put the request in, and I'm sure I'll have it to, for you sometime sooner than next quarter, if you want it.
Okay, any other questions from anyone? Appreciate your, your time, and, and excellent briefing, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I guess next topic, we're going to talk about the two thousand and twenty year in review, but basically, we're gonna focus on money, right?
Yeah, it's a, gonna look, kind of a basis, two thousand and twenty was anything but a normal year, so what we wanna try and show you is kind of what happened in two thousand and twenty, and, and the best person to lead us through that, as well as some of our other discussion, but we're prepared to, to chime in and help too, is Rena Neal, our Assistant Director of Finance. Thanks, Rena.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and first I wanna thank our budget team and our city manager's office for their assistance with this presentation this evening. So similar to what we did back in October, we're gonna go over how we ended the year as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. as of December 31st, 2020. I will highlight the general fund and some other cash balances as well as our debt and just historical and current trends with our cash balances and some special funds to watch. I will conclude with things to consider throughout 2021 as we begin the 2022 budget process and work through our strategic plan process, which is underway. So this first slide is in relation to our general fund revenue sources. So there are six sources reflected, property taxes, sales taxes, franchise fees, transfers from other funds, municipal court revenues and recreation programs and facilities. And I'm not going to read over everything that's printed on the slide, but primarily these six sources make up 78% of all of our general fund revenues. And we did bring in about 98% of our property taxes for the year compared to the budget and our sales taxes have been down 3% this past year compared to our budget. This year we received $3.8 million in Sparks Cares money primarily for our airport and then through Riley County. This next slide shows our budget compared to the revenues that we actually realized and then the shortfall throughout the year. And so as you can see, our budget compared to our revenues is about 5% short each year. Our shortfall for 2020 would have been about $5.4 million if we did not receive those cares funds. A special note, we have water parks, recreation programs, Discovery Center and Municipal Court being down primarily due to the impact of COVID. The general fund expenditures, this graph also reflects similar to the revenues in terms of showing the savings. So there are the various components of our budget in terms of expenditures and then the savings throughout each year. And so in 2020 and in similar years, we had a hiring freeze, we have departmental cuts in services and expenditure purchases. 2018 was one of those years as well. We were not bringing in the sales tax and the municipal court revenues that we had anticipated and so those went down and we were tasked with finding a way to save money in those years. Similar to back in the fall, we talked about transient guest tax, special alcohol, as well as some other funds that we needed to watch. Transient guest taxes came in at 71% of the budget in 2020 and we spent about 55% of that. And so we ended the year with $301,000 and those payments related to transient guest tax, we anticipate that they will not come in as they have in the past. So in 2019 and 20, we would have received about $552,000 for our first payment in 2000 and the first quarter of the year. We just received our February distribution, we only brought in $335,000. So that's about $220,000 difference that we brought in compared to 2019 and 20. So that will position us similar to what we were positioned in 2020 in terms of not being able to meet the, the anticipated distributions to those agencies. Special alcohol again is another revenue source that we need to pay attention to. 75% of the budgeted revenues came in and we spent about 76% of the budget, which ended the year with about $3,200. Again, those payments come in on a quarterly basis. We will receive special alcohol probably in March. We have been in contact with those agencies that received the distributions to let them know that their payments will be dependent upon the revenues received and we anticipate that there will be a shortfall.
Rena, I have a question.
Yes.
Got to sell here. So on like the special alcohol and the one before that.
Transient guest.
Does, is the reason the, the amount collected wasn't as bad as you would, might have expected to be is that the first half of the money collected would have been like from 2019, which means that 2020 really only had, one of the, one of the six-month collection periods was crap and, and the first one was from 2019, so that averages out to 75% or something collections. So for 2020, 2021 here, we're going to have.
A four years' worth.
Of crappy collections, yeah, but yeah, we'll have, we'll have the half for 2020 that we collected or get paid in 2021, so to speak, and then whatever percentage of drop off that continues, it'll most likely be two six-month periods of bad collections versus last year where it was maybe just one six months worth of bad collections. Is that?
Yes, so.
Does that make, as I'm?
It's based on a quarter.
Quarters.
Yes, based on a quarter. So considering students not being in town, the downturn in terms of the economy related to hotels and that industry, that would impact our transient guest tax and then our special alcohol as well in terms of just events and people going out.
So, so most of, is it, so we're only about a quarter, it, when we got a check the other day for transient guest tax, would that have been for the last quarter of 2020 then?
Yes.
Does it take about a month or six weeks to usually get our money?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is really, it, it, last year would have been worse if, if we hadn't collected some of the money from 2019 in 2020.
Correct.
But going forward, we, we don't have any good quarters on the horizon or behind us that's going to help 2021.
Correct.
Okay, I, I thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, I think that's a fair assessment Commissioner, that, that the T G T could be worse in, in 21 than it was in 20, just because you did have lagged, lapsed revenue. You had six full months of fairly normal collection prior to the pandemic hitting that were credited in 20 and that just hasn't recovered yet. So even though we have had some construction traffic, obviously that has helped with, with some of that and, you know, we anticipate that towards the latter half of the year, but again, that last quarter of this year goes to 22. So probably one of the, and, and one of the things that we're recommending we do is really address these as we start the budget process. And we'll have revised budgets. One of the reasons we have a little bit more available cash is because the C V B had a fairly large reserve fund and they used a lot of it as well as made cuts. So we, we didn't do, I think we only did six months distribution to all the T G T folks out of T G T. You did elect to do some other distributions, so that's kind of where we're at. But we would, we would recommend we address these shortfalls during the budget process.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my real point was, we can't count on 2021's collections to be as good as 2020's. That's what, we're not, we can't just say, oh yeah, last year was partially down, this year will be about the same. We can't say that because last year had some good stuff from 2019 still in it.
In some of those funds, is alcohol behind too? Is it a quarterly behind? Okay.
So, okay.
And I think that would be the assessment for all revenues in terms of just general fund as well. Think, looking at the sales taxes, those collections are two months behind in terms of when we receive the distribution. So we'll be coming back during the budget process like Mr. Fear said to address any shortfalls. Special Parks and Recreation is a fund that receives special liquor tax as well and they received 75% of the budgeted liquor tax and the total expenditures in that year was 55% of the budget. The ending balance, beginning balance for 2021 was about $735,000 and we just wanted to highlight that those balance, that balance is related to Peace Memorial, park improvements and transfer for the Discovery Center. So while their cash balance looks good, it's already earmarked for debt-related payments and transfers to the general fund. Special Sunset Zoo.
I want to make just a, just a comment for, for people listening out there. When we talk about these, because, because these are pretty key here, the special alcohol fund and then the Parks and Rec and then there's also a portion of that goes in the general fund.
Correct.
But that special liquor tax, just, just clarify exactly where that comes from so everybody understands.
So it comes.
Because it's directly tied to our restaurants and, and liquor sales in a restaurant, not a liquor store.
Correct.
So, so the problem is, you know, this is why the pandemic affected this so much. When, when you restrict the occupancy of your restaurants and force them to close, then they can no longer collect this and then therefore it does affect the special alcohol fund and Parks and Rec. And then as, as Ron's saying, we're trying to do the budget, you know, people will say, well, should you make this up? From where? You know, it is my question. So, you know, I, I'm of the mindset that like the special alcohol, yes, they can spend all the money we collect, but if we don't collect it, they're not going to get any more because where are we going to get it from? And, and that's my outlook on that.
And, and we'll certainly bring some options to you at budget time. One of the things we didn't get in 2020 was very much flexibility for replacing lost revenue in most of the cares and Sparks components. That appears like it might be a component in 21, so we're kind of just going to have to wait and see. One of the things we did do though with some of our general fund cash balance, if you will, I'm not necessarily advocating this, but, but that was some Sparks money that helped us get to that excess balance. So there are some options we have available to us if there's a desire to provide any additional funding of any kind. Again, we think we, there could be additional Sparks money for that or additional cares money coming that may be for lost revenue.
And I, I hope that's possible because that would be great, but you know, the problem is I don't want to see us, you know, resort to, well, let's raise property tax to make up the shortfalls in, in these liquor taxes. That, that's just not going to be on my agenda anyway. And we may have to prioritize it, you know, because it, maybe it's not the case of, well, we can't make up all the shortfall, but maybe we should make up a portion of it for selected groups if it's important enough. So that's something else to think about. I haven't really made a priority list on that, but that's my thought.
Well, and then some of those agencies have received some funding from other sources as well. So we may have not had lost revenue eligibility, but some of the specific not-for-profits and businesses who do get assistance for us may have gotten some of that aid. So that's another factor we'll have to look at as well.
Yep.
Ron, this is Yusha. I think the challenge we're facing in any of these funds are the same scenario across the United States. And it would be good when, I don't know when we will have the information for the $900 billion as well as the $1.9 trillion and how that's going to be allocated. And I think as they, as we figure that piece out, that's just probably good for this year. But the other piece for us is a substantial, our substantial financial challenge is personnel and figuring out how to do that because we have, I think some of these other ones are probably going to find that gap with some of these funds, but when we have to hire and that's going to be there for good, that, that salary base is going to be there for good. I think that's the heavy weighted topic that we will be getting into deeper because these are just little pockets of money stashed here and there, so. But I do want to know when we're going to get that information. I, I have never, I haven't received anything that tells me one way or the other who's, who's dispersing those funds, how much are they going to get it, when are they going to get it or any of that information yet?
Just, just to comment on that, the, the December approved bill, the 900 billion is starting to have more information about it. Most of that funding either went directly to entities, non-governmental, or states. And so the states are in the process of determining how they're going to utilize the money, whether the states are going to use it, some of it themselves, or they're going to use it to help other, other folks within the state. And so it doesn't look like it's going to have a provision like Sparks did. So the second cares bill gave the states broad capability to redistribute that and that's why the Sparks. So a lot of the third bill was targeted. We do know that KDOT as an example, is putting more of their funds into some of their state and local programs. So there's more grant money available in several of their categories as well as some of the direct funding we've get, we've gotten notice that we're going to get a little bump in, in some of our funds, which will be very helpful. Others, we know there's another airport element that's coming. Otherwise, we also know that there's going to be some rental and utility assistance that's going to be coming through the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, that the state at a much bigger amount than was there last year. So with a little bit more flexibility in not just something that you have had, but if you are recently or about to be, it can, it can go into, into the future. So we are learning more about that. There's a little bit of information coming out on the, on the 1.9 trillion one, but not a lot. So there's a House Committee that's had a provision, but it's pretty early to speculate whether that's actually going to make it through the final legislation, so. But it does appear like there, if there's money for local governments, that there's likely to be some replacement revenue.
The next fund to highlight is the Special Sunset Zoo. Special Sunset Zoo was impacted by COVID as well. It was closed for a few months and they only brought in 34% of the budgeted revenue and spent 34% of that fund. The ending balance of 2020, beginning for 2021 was $40,191 and the revenue for two, comparing the revenue received in 2020 to the revenue received in 2019, it was $486,000 that were received. This next slide highlights our general fund cash balances from 2015 through 2021 and it compares it to a targeted cash balance based on recommendations from GFOA and our financial advisor Baker Tilly. So for 2020, 88% increase in our general fund beginning cash balance due to the Sparks funds that we received, which was about $3.8 million in our department savings. Only 12% increase in general fund beginning cash balance from 2019. Again, our target is $9 million and we, our blue line is the general operating cash balance over the year. So in 2015, we operated at a loss if we just compared revenues and expenses and that dipped into our cash balance for 2016 and then 2017 as well, we had a loss. And then in 2018, as I mentioned earlier, we had some savings due to hiring freezes and not knowing how the revenues were going to come in, we held back on some programs and services as well as expenditures and capital improvements and capital outlay. The next slide references all cash balances related to the property tax funded funds. So there are seven funds listed on the slide. Three of them are important to watch, employee benefits, fire pension and Riley County Police Department. Employee benefits and fire pension ended the year with no cash. And then Riley County Police Department ended the year with about $9,800. As you can see on the slide, 43% of the increase in evaluation was used to help with the R C P D cash balance and cash flow. And we anticipate that the expenditures for employee benefits and fire pension will be about the same for 2021 and therefore will impact the cash balances in those two funds. This pie chart shows all of our cash balances for the budgeted funds as of the beginning of 2021, it's about 46 million. If the cares funds weren't included, it would be about 42 million in there. There was an increase from 2020 to 2021's beginning cash balance due to cares, funds, recreation and trails, special sales tax, special street and highway and wastewater. recreation and trails, special sales tax, special street and highway and wastewater. Of note, related to special street and highway and wastewater, those balances increased due to delaying projects in anticipation of potential revenue shortfalls. And wastewater also had an increase in their rates, so that also contributed to the cash balance increase for the wastewater fund. The next two slides reflect um, our debt portfolio. Every month we provide a document that lists our various debt instruments and how they are paid. And this is just broken out in a different manner in terms of the top um, four categories in terms of repayment. So city at large, and I'll explain what, how that is comprised, utilities, specials and special obligation. So for the city at large, there's various funding sources that make up the payment of that debt, uh, but that 39%. We have general fund, bond and interest fund, various special revenue funds, including the library for their transfer for that improvement of the expansion, special sunset zoo for some of those improvements, special street and highway, tourism and convention, economic development, special sales taxes related to recreation and trails, lease payments related to the airport and passenger facility charges as well. The next slide is just a pie chart.
Can I just, yeah, just, just one question again. Just to clarify for the public, we've got these categories here. And people always look at the, you know, total city debt and they say, oh, you know, right now if you look at that slide, it's 268 million and, and 627,000 or so dollars. But the reality is which, which part of that is actually a citizen on the hook for in terms of property tax? And that's just the at-large part, correct?
Yes, it's the city at large part, but it's comprised of all of those sources that I mentioned. So some of it is property tax related, but then also it is other revenue sources from the special revenue funds.
Yeah, there's, there's very little property tax in our debt service funds. So uh, as Rena said, there's a, a multitude, it would only be the city at large debt, the, the 104 million that uh, most of those have specified revenue streams. And as long as those revenue streams are performing, uh, we should be okay. Uh, obviously when you have things like COVID, uh, you're going to hear us at budget time talk about, you know, our PFC revenue being down. So some of that airport money that we're getting, we're going to be holding that because we're going to have more debt, debt service payments to make. Uh, and, and we had a surplus of PFCs uh, that we were carrying while we were on tip notes on the terminal. Now that the, both phases of the terminal will go under general obligation bond, that reserve will go pretty quick. Uh, because we were forecasted to uh, actually look at some additional bond and interest fund participation, and that may come sooner. So the, the good thing about the FAA cares money is we can use it to help make those payments. So those are some of those analysis that we're making. And so as we get additional revenue, we're not going to be uh, as anxious to put that money into the general fund, uh, which we could do to subsidize some of our operations there. Uh, we're probably going to hold some of that for future debt service. Uh, so those are just uh, it's a, it's a complex aspect, but very little of our, uh, our debt is supported by property tax.
But, but the one that, you know, we really need to focus on the city at large because the other three pretty much take care of themselves.
They do as long as, uh, you know, the, obviously the specials. Uh, if people are making their specials and tax payments on time and we're getting those, then yes, those, those have that debt, those dedicated revenue streams to retire that debt.
And then, then the other point that maybe is unclear, the, the economic development tax over the past 10 years has contributed to driving this down significantly. And I wanted to be sure that was highlighted. And then we've got the, the renewal one, so that's, uh, that plays a big role in this. I think it made a difference uh, over the years, anywhere between, over the past 10 years, 1.2 mils to 2 mils each year. What would have been on the property tax, except the economic development tax directly impacted this part of our debt, so.
Not only the, the debt service reduction, but also the uh, infrastructure components for debt service is, it's helping with that as well.
I wanted to ask about the FAA cares. Is that gonna, you're gonna dedicate that to the airport um, debt service, right?
Well, we haven't totally decided, but I, I can tell you that's something that uh, as we continue to analyze and make projections, that's a, that's kind of a red flag that went up for me that we're going to use up a lot of our, our cash reserves that have our PF, we've been accumulating these PFCs, I mean, 19 was a record year. So we didn't have, we only had temp note payments to make. So now that we're going to start general obligation payments on, and we had two different bond issues. We had one for phase one and one for phase two. Uh, when both of those kick in, we were going to use all those PFC reserves up and, as well, before we start supplementing with other sources. If we were to keep up our levels of service like we had in 19, that forecast looked beautiful. But now that we're down to three flights, um, that's going to make a big impact and it's going to be slow to recover. So we're going to have to be very guarded about how we utilize those funds going forward.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be sure I didn't misinterpret.
The next slide is just that same information broken up into a pie chart. 39% is city at large and the various sources that comprise that. Utilities is next, and then the special assessments, and then special obligation. And our special obligation debt, majority of that will pay off by 2022, 2025. Similar to back in the fall, these are some things that we um, are considering in the finance department as well as city administration. We have been focused on the organizational excellence initiative for the past two years. Um, and in that conversation, it came the strategic plan and the pay study, and all of that is budget focused. We will continue to look at investing in equipment, facilities and infrastructure that continues to be um, a highlight as part of the OEI as well as strategic plan conversations. There's been an overwhelming deferred maintenance for the various departments not um, being able to um, purchase equipment. Operation services continues to be a focus and HR, finance, as well as information technology, legal and the clerk's office. Excuse me, property taxes. Um, we want to continue to look at that as a reliable revenue stream. This is something that is brought up during our conversations with our um, bond rating agency as well as our financial advisor. Sales taxes continue to remain flat. They've been that way over the past five years. And that, again, those are highlighted during our conversations with our Moody's, who is our bond rating agency, and then Baker Tilly, our financial advisor, the heavy reliance of own sales tax. Um, and how that, those funds come in greatly impact our operations and our services. And then finally, the financial stability of the organization is something that we want to highlight um, this year in the budget season. We want to come back to you all with our financial advisor to talk about our debt strategy and our portfolio that we've been compiling as well as any other recommendations that GFOA and our financial advisor deems um, necessary for us to maintain our bond rating. That concludes the presentation, and we welcome any additional questions or feedback.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment, you know, the, the key points I think are good, but you know, it says here reluctance, reluctance to raise property taxes, you know? Just, just to make it clear, I'm not reluctant to raise them, I'm not going to raise them. My vote's going to be no on property tax increase. And, and I say that because we have to have a philosophy for understanding that, and I get the point here. You know, sales taxes not doing well, they've been flat for five years. But we have an economic development program. That tells me the economic development program's not working. And we just jump started some extra money in that with the new tax coming up and the chambers rearrange what they're doing. But that's where we got to put our effort is making that work. Because raising property taxes is just, you know, that, everything you, you hear from the, from the local population is that's why they're moving out of town. You know, that's why Potawatomi County is growing. It's because nobody wants to pay the property tax in the city. And I realize it's not just the city. It's uh, you know, we got the county, we got the, we got the school boards and, and all those kind of things. But uh, people aren't breaking it down. I think we're probably a smaller part of that problem. But, but I think that dynamic of running the city on sales tax is not going to change. And I know it'd be easier for the staff if we just said, fine, let's raise it six mils. Now, now you've got a standard revenue stream and let's not worry about sales tax, but uh, I just don't see it going that way. So that's, that's just the philosophy, you know, that, that I have from a, you know, from, from my perspective. And that's why the success of that economic development, you know, sales tax and, and what the chambers doing, the programs, is important to get those revenues back up. And, and I know COVID, you know, put us, put us back on our heels because we shut all of our businesses down. But we've got to get them open back up and, and, and get uh, you know, get moving. And I agree, we have to have financial stability for, for those bonds, especially with the interest rates low like they are. We don't want them, you know, kicking us up into a, you know, into another, another category. And the other thing that I'd like to see us put when we do the, start looking at the next budget cycle, is we talked a little bit about outside agencies tonight with, with that special alcohol fund and some of those things. I'd like to see us turn that into two categories, one of which I call mandated outside agencies. And I'm talking there, the MPO and Riley County Police Department. Because if we don't really control that budget, they send us a bill, we have to pay it. You know, so, so it's not truly an outside agency like the others where theoretically the commission could say, no, we're not going to fund you. And there's a whole list of those other ones, everything from the Wolf House to the, the, you know, the bids and all that. And, and separate that out so that, so that we know. And then the other thing I, I would like to see us do in terms of financial stability, and I've mentioned this many times, is change the library charter ordinance so that the employee benefit fund for the library is part of their six mils. Now, now I know they've never gone over the, the years I've been on the commission, but they could in the future. So to ensure that it's stable, if that becomes part of it, then it's six mils for the library and you can count on it, that's stable. Right now, you can't count on it because they could spend six mils and then you still have to play the employee benefit fund on top of it. And, and that, that means it's not stable in my mind. So those are just some thoughts on, on that. But I, but I agree that we need to get the cash balances up and we need to have some stable outlook. But, but I don't want that to be translated into people that are listening out there that that means they're going to raise property taxes. Because me for one, I'm not.
I think uh, that's a great segue to the mill discussion.
Any other questions for Rena?
Thank you, Rena.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for the briefing and, and all this paperwork that you folks did this week. I spent a lot of time reading it, this was some outstanding, outstanding statistics. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think before Jason kind of gets into just a little bit more focus on 2021 and, and starting the br- budget process for 2022, obviously you all have given us the direction that, that you want us to have uh, programs and, and our facilities operating uh, this year. So we're recharging and working hard to fill positions that have been vacant and rebuilding our group. But, and, and I'll tell you that, you know, what we, what I want to convey to you is we still have anticipated shortfalls in a lot of those categories. Now, a lot of those programs, uh, you know, like the summer day camp, that kind of breaks even. Pools, not so much. So I'm, we, there's risk in doing what we're doing. Now, I do think there's a good chance we're going to get some outside help, but I just want you to be aware that, that we are moving forward. And I hope we don't have to use all the savings that, that if you look at the city's monthly reports and, and you look at that final one, there's nothing but red from underspending in every department. Every department made sacrifices uh, to underspend their budgets substantially, over $6 million. Um, and that's what contributed to our cash carryover. That's what gave us our extra pay period that we paid last year. So it isn't, it isn't an easy road by any means, and there is some risk in ratcheting back up again. So just, I wanted to convey that to you so that you were where, kind of where we were. So it's, it's a, there's definitely nothing on autopilot and there hasn't been for quite a while.
And I want to mention, I'm glad you mentioned that $6 million savings because there's still a lot of folks out there that say, well, the, the city didn't do enough. $6 million is one whopping amount of savings and sacrifice that, that people have done. And, and that does actually set us up maybe nice for improving that cash balance because of the sacrifices people made. So I, I greatly appreciate what everybody on the city staff did to make that happen.
And I appreciate that comment, and it's, it's something that we can't bring the levels of service back up and achieve that same result.
I'll jump into just a few slides we had prepared. And these are slides that you all have seen before, finance department updated some, some numbers for us. These were, obviously last year we were talking more about the 2020 numbers and budget has increased. You know that, and I appreciate your comments too, Mayor, about staff, you know, Rena and Rebecca and Tammy uh, and Lindsay have just done an excellent job for us. Um, it's been a real transition in finance, and there's been a real transition in, in several departments. I bring back the memory you all, it wasn't that long ago, all departments were up here in front of you talking about their challenges, talking about the last year, the last two years, last several years. We recognize Mila, these are not easy to increase. There, there, there's no argument there. And, and it's also, if we're not going to raise taxes, if we're not going to look for ways to pay for these things other ways, we need feedback on what not to do. For five years, you saw the gaps that the savings were created every year. That chart to me that Rena put together and in her staff, um, i- is the most telling chart uh, for how operations have gone. Uh, and it, it's one that I really, we could spend a couple hours on this. Because that highlighted savings is required. And I will tell you, we're already looking at ways we can save this year because we're anticipating revenues not being there. It starts in January. And for, for municipalities, they're looking for reliable resources. You're looking for revenue streams that are reliable and predictable. This chart tells you, we don't have them. And I don't want to sit here and, and cause a stir and say, property taxes are reliable, but that's what the majority of municipalities rely on. Manhattan doesn't. We rely heavily on sales tax. A, a, a revenue stream that absolutely peaks and troughs. I, I found Director Butler's comments interesting. Big boxes cost him the most resources. Big boxes put the revenues on that sheet. If Riley County and Manhattan should have a strategy for the next five years, it's how many big boxes can we get in Riley County to generate more sales tax? We do a lot as an organization to grow the economic base of this community, and we get 11% in return. 90 goes to other entities. How much of that is the city responsible for creating for these other entities from property tax perspective? We keep the pedal down when it comes to development and opportunities. But that return isn't necessarily where the city should put its eggs in the basket. If, if you travel to Potawatomi County, there is a lot in the city limits from a sales tax perspective, a tremendous amount. If that same revenue were generated in Riley County, you guys have seen it. They share 5%, Riley County shares 60. You got a Walmart in Potawatomi County, you put that Walmart in Riley County, significant amount of revenue, significant. It just begs the question, if, if property taxes aren't going to be the revenue stream, what is? Or what services do we just stop? Or what services do we just stop doing? Because that's what you're doing. When you have to generate savings, we're looking internally and we're not doing what the budget is approved to do. Because as soon as it's approved and January 1 hits, we start watching revenue streams. We're not predictable, we're not reliable. That is very concerning to city staff because there's an expectation. And we start watching revenues day one. The slides that we put together for you all are just high, and, and Mayor, you brought this up and you're exactly right. You've got five mills, just over $3 million, supporting the bond and interest fund for debt service. A little over 10% of the entire debt that we service annually through property taxes. The other 6.6 mils, property taxes, 3.9 million in the general fund, basically operating the city. That's how limited the participation in property taxes are. The rest of the revenue streams, they're unreliable. We rely on them, but they're unreliable. Franchise fees, municipal court fees, sales tax, they're just not reliable. You know, the strategies moving forward, revenue streams, those unreliables are great to build things up and then go along with reliable. If, if, if the unreliable become reliable at certain points in time, you capitalize on that, you save them. But when they become unreliable, you got to eat into that. Well, we've been eating into it and it's getting kind of a pressing point. I didn't think we'd get very far in tonight's conversation before we talked about CARES and Spark. And I understand, I understand that, I do. Philosophically though, the question we talked about internally, for this budget season, talking about 2022, something that I just, I'd like you to think about. Is your philosophy one in which we do eat in to the six and a half million cash ballots to do some things in 2022? To operate? Or do we look for sustainable resources for the next five years? It's going to be path of least resistance to use some of that cash balance. I understand that completely. It, it is going to be a lot less painful, a lot less harder discussions. It's going to be very attractive. But philosophically, I, I really, if we can get that feedback, if we know where the majority would like us to go with those things, we can start building this thing in, in a certain way. I'd rather not guess and keep guessing on where philosophically you want to be with that additional $3 million we had carryover due to really the federal money.
So how does the economic development taxes play into this? And I guess we're talking four of them now. If we count the, the one that's going to kick in in 2023, we've got three past ones. There's some funding there that's as much as this 6.5 that you saved, right?
And I think it's the same philosophical question, Mayor. I think we need the five of you to weigh in on how freely do you want to use these funds to plug holes and fill gaps?
What, what I would like to do, you know, is, is I'm all for using those economic development funds. I would like to save as much of that 6.5 that, you know, you squeezed out of everything, squeezed the turnip and keep it because there's no way we're going to get to 9 million in, in a reserve if, if we spend it. So, so I'm, I'm resistant to doing that. I'd expend those economic development funds first. That's where I'm at.
And we've had that conversation in the room, but it's another good topic to, to really get consideration from all of you. How much of that do you really, do you want to plug into the operational budgets of the city? And the alternative is you look at services. And none of that gets really positive for you all in feedback, you know, whether it's internal or external when we stop doing something. But I think the last five years have been very critical to look at budgeted amounts and actuals because you can see it, it's just, they're just not coming in.
Yeah, I have a cell here. Yeah, the, um, I had it and then I forgot it. I'll come back.
I'll come back, I'll come back. No problem.
So Jason, I'll, I'll answer some of your questions, or at least respond. I mean, we don't have clear answers till all of the budget sessions are over. But the way I see it is even the years that we've increased property taxes, it's been like 0.6 or 0.5 or whatever it is. And the great chunk of funds is for personnel. And when you cut personnel, you're cutting services. And because you all do such a great job, the public doesn't see the services that are being cut because they can make do for now. But as we move forward, that's a constant. And if you don't have a constant funding source to care, take care of the personnel and the services we're providing and you're only relying on sales tax, well, like you said, and everybody here knows that sales tax has not been growing for the post, past four or five years. Even before the pandemic hit, we were having hiring freezes. Even before the pandemic hit, we were trying to figure out how to use economic development funds and transient guest tax and cutting a third, third, third here. All of those discussions were happening. So I think any money that's been given by the CARES funds is a temporary placeholder and that's going to be gone and then we'll be back at putting that peg into something once again. So I'm open to a, a reliable funding source, like you said. I mean, some of the other ones for, for the debt have a dedicated revenue source. But our city organization doesn't. And I think that's something we need to keep an open mind about and see where this community wants to go. Our community is still growing. We have so much potential. And I feel with Kansas State University and all the other infrastructure that's happening, we are still going to be growing, growing and growing. And that's what we need to tap into because that's going to be the property taxes. Sales tax will only take us so far. But I, I know a great, a great majority of it will also go to RCPD. Whether, whatever happens to our staff won't matter. It has to go to RCPD. You are responsible for that as well as the library. But when we don't have services, we do hear about it from our constituents. And I think that is something, that's an expectation. And I think there is a need to make sure we are taking care of our community to the fullest extent and not having personnel and staff leave because we can't give them what they need to stay here for their own families. So I'm open to more discussions and I understand where we are at. But we're not here just because of the pandemic. We're here for several years. We've been here. The pandemic makes it seem it's all because of it, but it's not. We would have been here anyway. So, thank you.
I remembered. Okay. The, I, I'm all in favor of using some of the economic development leftover money here. But I don't want us to, to burn through that and then next summer, 2022, some project needs $3 million. It's going to create 57 jobs at $50,000 a year and we don't have the money. And we say, well, we can, we'll have it in a year and a half and, and then we're no better off than we were before. The problem is, is part of the, the marketing of the new sales tax was, well, if you pass the sales tax, we won't raise your property tax to pay for all these big projects coming along because 70% of it will go to infrastructure, debt reduction, stuff like that. So, so if people were okay with spending the new half cent sales tax to keep their property tax down, I would assume they'd still be okay spending the old economic development proper, uh, sales tax money to help keep their property tax down. So I think, I think we can make that argument. The problem is it, it just kicks the can down the road because we still, we're still plugging it with, with money that's temporary, even though what's temporary for the next two plus 10 years, it's still temporary money. And so at some point in the future, some commission's going to have to figure out, okay, that money's now gone. And now we, now we've been plugging a $2 million hole with it instead of a $400,000 hole or a $600,000 hole. So we're kicking the can down the road and we're going to, at some point, we're going to have to wean ourselves off of the easy eco-devo money. But I would agree that if we've, we've, with the pain and heartache that's got the ending cash balance to six and a half million, shoot for six, carryover at, at a minimum hopefully. And, and then maybe at the end of the year, if, if things start turning around a little bit, it can, it can be a little higher than, than, at least where we're at, if maybe a little bit more yet. But yeah, I think that, yeah, obviously eco-devo money is the, the low, low hanging fruit. But it's, sooner or later, we're going to pick that tree blank, empty, and then we're going to have to really make some tough decisions at some point. But we most likely won't be the ones having to do that.
Um, I, I guess part of my hesitation in saying this is what my philosophy is, is that this is the first presentation, right? And we also have the strategic plan and don't want to step on. I'm, I'm interested in what their feedback is and what they come up with and how that ties into setting our priorities in the budgeting going forward. So I'm not, I caveat my, my position based on things might change as we learn more through the strategic planning process and whatnot. But for me, it's kind of, it's, there, there's, so over on the school board, all we had was property tax. It was very stable. It was so stable, the state would take the money because they had other risky behaviors and we wouldn't get our money from property tax. Here on the city, we're very reliant on sales tax, right? Extremely reliant compared to most cities. And it's, it's been, to, looking back, I see like a decade or more of, it's almost like a gamble. And we've been winning. We won a lot. Uh, we won for a decade where we were able to outgrow and expand to a point where we haven't been able to keep that up with our internal organization and to, to really look. We have finance equipment that needs to be updated, uh, that costs maybe $2 million that we just kept expanding and rolling the, the dice on the sales tax and going in that direction. So I am 100% sure that what we have to do is find something a little bit more reliable because that run of, of rolling those dice and hitting those numbers can't go on forever. But what is reliable is some property tax. And what is unfortunate for our community is that, um, as you look, I mean, RCPD has 27 mills there. That's property tax. Your schools are property tax, your fires property tax. There's a lot of property tax funds. And yet the city gets less than 10% potentially of that, of that mill rate there. You know, there's, if you just look at the general fund, if that's what we're trying to use to pay for internal organization things, it's like three or four cents on a dollar of your property tax. We've really, we get 100% of the blame for all the property tax and that's fine. But we don't really, we haven't invested in our people and our infrastructure and our organization. And the only way to do that without rolling the dice and hoping for, uh, and I'm, I'm all for using Mark's side of the eco-devo fund if, if whichever portion gets us those $50,000 jobs to come. But that's still a gamble. Um, and it doesn't do anything to address the institutional organization that we've neglected and overextended in some ways. So that's where I'm at philosophically, philosophy wise. If that means a bump in, in property tax, uh, okay, let's see what that looks like. But it doesn't need to be, it needs to be in proportion to what it takes to run the community at what we've already invested in. We don't need to have things closed down in years from now, like we've talked about before. What's it take, what's that property tax number or the reliable fund? If we don't want to say the word property tax, reliable fund, to take to run our community and be functional? Because what we're, what I'm finding out is that reliable fund of six mills in the general fund isn't enough of what we've overextended to run the community. That, what's, what's that proportion? How much does it take to get us there? And I, I'd be interested in, in going in that direction. But again, there's a lot of time between now and the budgeting. But I'm not, I think we have to go back and look at how we shore up our backbone in the, the infrastructure internally.
I was going to say, this is in the magazine, this is what I would see every year. So it was like 18 cents for local and city on the dollar. So there you go.
Uh, one of the questions I had was the materials report a 2% decline in property tax revenue. Uh, what is, how, how do you explain that? Or how, can I better understand what it is that's, is it people not paying them? Is, is it?
I think it was a 2% reduction in what we budgeted.
Correct.
So.
So it wasn't a reduction in property taxes we budgeted. As I looked through some of the materials, I, uh, it seemed that we were budgeting pretty high and the revenues were coming in under. And so I'd like, I'd like for us to be, to budget at a more realistic level and not be as optimistic because right now is just probably not the best time to be optimistic about the budget. But I also, I want to, I, I think it's terribly important that we also bring in the other aspects of the budget with regard to like, what is the Chamber of Commerce? Are we going to, how, and the use of the economic development money? And I mean, we have, we have some options and it's just moving the, the parts around on the, on the board a bit. And it is hard to make some of these decisions. And it's hard to raise property taxes. And I don't want to any more than anybody else does. So it's, it's, um, I know that we have, uh, in some ways neglected the core of the operations. Like still relying on an AS400, for example. Or the old telephone system that we used till it just literally died. So I, I agree, I am interested, I'm, I'm interested in some save. If we invest in these things, I'm interested in some savings too. If we get an, you know, a new HR system, not having to hire additional positions for it, but eventually being able to have that be efficient. And some of the other things that, uh, I do support a pay study. And I think that our, and I know that everybody's going to be self-examining this year because of tight revenue at every level, state, federal, local, everything. So I'm not even sure this is the year for a pay study because I think it's going, going to be out of the norm. Just like everything to do with 2020 and 2021 are out of the norm. And like, who said it, Rena, Jason? There's going to be an asterisk, maybe it's Director Butler. There's going to be an asterisk by 2020 and, and I, and 2021 also because we aren't back to normal. I'm not so sure this is the year, is all I'm saying. And now you can check with your experts about that. Anyway, I think, uh, I am interested in, in updating our technology so that we have better options and better, or better information. Sometimes I wish we, we as commissioners had better information. I know that you have, um, reports that you look at internally and we get a synthesized version that's on a, on a spreadsheet, on a PowerPoint. And so, but I wish we had some better and more information sometimes to, to, to evaluate. I do support the strategic plan. I think it's important that we do that because it's going to help us focus. That's not going to help us for this budget year because that strategic plan won't record in until after we make decisions on this next, this budget that's coming up in the next few months. So we're kind of going to fly blind, COVID blind probably. And, um, I, it is a, we're a sum of our parts, sales tax, property tax, franchise, everything. And I know franchise fees are going down and it's because things are changing. And we're going to have to change too. And I keep, uh, talking about finding other revenue sources and like the Airbnb. I believe those people should be paying transient guest tax, just like our hotel people are paying them. And I don't, you know, there are communities that make that. And I don't, you know, there are communities that make that happen. And I think we're behind the curve on some things like that that would generate new revenue. But, uh, so I'd like to keep plugging away at that. Um, I don't know, there you go.
Appreciate, appreciate the feedback.
I wanted to, just clarifying, cause I'm, I'm having trouble putting it in perspective here, but, and people listening out there may not get the distinction out. Now, what I'm interested in is, is that we have a flat mill levy. That doesn't mean that property taxes will not go up as far as dollars go because that's gonna depend on assessments. I just got the assessment on my house, it went up. So if the mill levy stays flat, Butler pays more taxes next year, I understand that. But philosophically, that's where I'm at. That, you know, we, we craft a budget with a flat mill levy, there will be increases because of, of what a mill is actually worth. And what I wanna know is how the rest of the commission would articulate that. Cause, cause none of you really said specifically that I will vote to increase the mill levy.
I, I'd be happy to articulate it and I don't care to, the distinction to me is irrelevant. And whatever the dollar figure is, if that is a increase in a mill or a half a mill or a .25 to get us to a point of where we have operational integrity and we have the ability to fund technology and we are on our way down the path of organizational excellence, that's fine. I don't care if it's, I don't care for the political distinction between a mill or a flat mill or raising taxes. So when I say raising taxes, I am just looking at that, just like the legislature's talking about the transparency. Um, so the mill isn't, uh, a factor in my, it's just getting us to that dollar amount that makes the most sense. It's gonna be, there's gonna be a tax increase, cause I know your property's worth more. Almost everybody's in Manhattan and it seems to be worth a lot more. So taxes will probably go in, going up for everybody regardless.
Yeah, but you're, you're basically saying then you would increase the mill levy.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm saying I'm open to that, seeing that, yeah. I'm not coming in saying that, yeah.
That's all I'm looking for, just, just wanting to know.
If that's what you want.
I think that's what the staff needs to know.
No, I don't think that's what the staff needs to know. I think the staff is giving us information so we can make up our mind on where we need to go. I think that's an unfair question without getting all the information we need and then prioritizing how we're going to take care of city business. That's how we, that's how I see this, not going in with, um, making up my mind already. And, and this is how, for the past seven years, you want us to say one way or the other without getting all the information. Let's get all the information first and then decide. That's what is a budgeting process, that, that's why we do this.
Yeah, but the budgeting process starts with a philosophy. And if the philosophy is that, you know, we're gonna build it and then figure out how to get the money, you have to start with a focus. And, you know, if I was the city staff and I knew that, okay, we got a commission that's gonna raise the mill levy, as long as I present it that way, then that's good. Now, if, if, if the staff also knows that the commission's not really inclined to want to do that, unless there's some really critical reason that they present, you know? A- a- and I can understand that happening. Where, where there be something, I think sort of like what Aaron was saying, if it, if it comes up with, there just isn't any way to make this work. We tried all the other widgets and the only way we can make this critical thing work is to get a .5 mill levy increase. You know, and, and if the briefing comes out that way, then fine. But that's worst case. And, and all I'm saying is that I think the staff deserves, you know, a more focused philosophy on how we're gonna approach the budget.
Can, uh, it's almost the mirror image of saying that I'm willing to raid the $6 million surplus because that's a Band-Aid if we don't have to raise taxes. Like, I, I'm saying everything's on the table, including an increase in the mill levy, including reading the, the surplus, including taking the economic development. I wanna see what makes the most sense to get us there and hopefully it won't be, uh, the, the worst-case scenario because we know what it is today. We know what it was last year. We know what it's like to lose $6 million and make those cuts. So, I, I, I don't, I'm not coming, I hope that it's not received by the public as we wanna rea- raise your taxes. It's, I'm not, uh, taking that off the table until we find what is sustainable because taking these, uh, Band-Aids and putting them in for the next two years as we wait for economic development, sales tax to renew, isn't a sustainable answer either. It's just another shell game to kick the can down the road.
Well, see, I don't wanna call it a shell game, you know? Like, like people send me notes and they just say, look, build your budget and only spend the money you take in. And, and so that means, and Jason understands this, cause he said, we're gonna have to cut something and we'll tell you what it is. If, if the philosophy is to live within your means. And living within your means is not raising the mill levy. Just like, you know, doesn't matter, you know, I, I make X amount of money. I can't spend more than that because I, I can't go out and beg the money. I only get so much. So your lifestyle is based on how much you make individual income. And I think everybody in the city understands that. What they don't understand is why the city can't operate that way. You know, an individual gets a salary, they live within their salary. Most people do. Or, or they can run up a credit card, whi- which is, you know, another disaster, you know, in itself in the long run. And, 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 and that's, that's why it's important to me to un- to understand, you know, the overall philosophy when we start the budget. And I, and I've been here listening to 10 budgets and we always start with a, it seems like, okay, we're gonna raise it six mills. And then we drop it to four, three, two, and then, then the commission settles on, oh, well, it's only a mill, it's only half a mill. And then they go ahead and vote yes on it. And, and I wanna see us start this budget process the other way around. That here's what happens if it's zero mill increase. And then here's, here's the critical things that go away that we can't do. Can you live with them? That's the philosophical approach I wanna see.
And it's been a big part of why we've been pushing for the strategic plan. You know, revenue sources aren't unlimited. No governing body is going to just sit there and continue to raise taxes just to meet all, any and all needs. We, we understand that. The, the conversation we've, we've been trying to turn a little bit is, where do you want Manhattan to be in five years? Where do you want it to be in three? Because when we just look at one year, quite frankly, there are too many places you can go pull from and shove them in. And, and, and that's, and you look at that graph, that's exactly what we've been doing for five years. And we're kinda coming to you saying, if you could back up five, is this where you would anticipate us to be? Because that vision gives us guidance on how to build things. From a staffing perspective, from an equipment, vehicle and facilities. And Jared did some great research for me today and he, we have over 370 vehicles, trucks, trailers, pieces of equipment, 370. In the last five years, we've replaced 15%. If you take that five years, you gotta get, the expectation would be some of this is 30 years old before it's replaced. We can't, that's not sustainable. So it's that type of data, it's that type of vision. I think the strategic plan will help us, I do. But as a governing body, looking at the five-year window for how we pay our people, looking at that five-year window, how, how much equipment, tools, enhancements are we gonna make? If we put them off and defer them and then all of a sudden, you got this spike. I, I don't think that's really where our constituents want us to be either. You know, there is a living in, within your means mentality, I get it. But organizations like ours have a ton of different pressure points, wanting us to increase this, wanting us to increase that. They voted on something, we built it, now we gotta staff it. Three pools, been the same conversation every year. They voted for them, we built them, here we go. Rec centers, they voted for them, we build them, here we go. The community has incredibly passed three sales tax in the last five years. We've had community surveys indicating certain things. It is interesting what the community has told us in the last five. Correspondingly, it's also very interesting how we've budgeted ourselves. And philosophically, that's kind of a discussion. It's 2021. Where do you want this community to be in 2026? By way of the services we provide, the people we hire, the facilities we occupy. You all take tours, you all have conversations with department heads. Those are the folks who are overseeing the 420 people in this organization providing services full-time. The nearly 800 to 1,000 part-timers, seasonal folks. They're out there every day doing what's expected of them. Where do we want them to be in five years? Those answers aren't for this evening, but that's the philosophical discussion we'd like to get to. Lots of pressures, you guys know the pressures. Many of you have been up here a number of years, you know where the pressures are. How do we get to that five-year outcome? I think we just had, yeah, just the residential and commercial, you've seen these before. I mean, you can, you can break down property taxes all day long, but at, at the end of the day, we're really talking about being strategic, talking about where do we want the organization to be? And we, and we just implore you to go down that path. Rena and I have talked, she is very open. If you all wanna come in and sit down with her, go through the facts and the figures, Dennis, Ron, Jared, myself, very open. Coming in, meeting, talking about this philosophical approach. We've gotta get this figured out.
Jason, um, can you clarify? Uh, Commissioner Morris had mentioned the strategic plan doesn't have bearing on these decisions. But is that, uh, the way that we designed it, uh, they will be implemented into this cycle of decisions?
I think we have eight months to get through that process.
So, we do anticipate with the first two rounds of public engagement, sorry, I'm gonna change the camera. Pulling double duty here. We, uh, we do anticipate the first two rounds of public engagement to be complete by the end of May. Uh, that second round of public engagement is gonna be at the beginning of May and that'll give the strategic planning consultants a- enough time to digest some of that information. After the first round of public engagement in March that we talked about, the week of March 22nd, we'll be back in front of the commission probably in April, synthesizing some of those results, talking about vision, goals, some of those strategic objectives that is gonna help us build that May th- week of May 3rd public engagement round. So we do anticipate to have s- some suggested outcomes and strategic actions for the 2022 budget. The plan won't be, will likely be adopted at the same time. We plan to finalize that strategic plan sometime in August, September. But we do anticipate to have some good reactions and feedback to, to help us for the 2022 budget.
Cause as I recall, I think the, that was the intent, as why we had a rushed schedule and a tight window was trying to meet the, the budget timeline. So we'd have that feedback, so I just wanted to make sure I didn't.
Yeah, that's correct.
Misunderstand, okay.
Well, I hope, I hope the strategic plan ties to the budget. I mean, that was the input I gave the consultant, cause in my mind, you, you can't separate the two. I mean, we can, we can have public comment on this and people will come with these want lists of all this wonderful stuff they wanna build. And, and, and you can't be considering that outside the budget. I mean, we got a good picture where the budget sits right now. What does that mean? That, that means the strategic plan can't say, build a riverfront project next year. It, it can't say, build this, build that, that's tax dollars. It, it's gotta be a strategic plan that focuses closer to, I, I think the vision the chamber put out on economic growth. That, that if sales tax is driving the city, then the strategic plan has got to be designed around the method of attracting business, causing a domino effect, which, which I think is happening in Aggieville, starting with a garage, and, and, and getting tax incremental financing dis- uh, districts to finance things. It puts us on a sustainable sales tax course. You know, cause we like to use that word, sustainable is only property tax? No, sales tax can be sustainable too. You know, i- i- if you, if you can, if you can keep it steady. And I know COVID put a terrible hiccup into it, but, but I think we're gonna start coming out of that in April. I'm optimistic. And I think we can get that going. And, and, and if, if, if the chambers, you know, money that they got dedicated from the Economic Development Fund can, can actually start bringing in what we anticipate, I think we can turn this thing around. I really do. But without resorting to, you know, huge property tax increases. And as, as Mark said, you know, people were told, vote for the economic development tax because that way you're not gonna get saddled with a big property tax increase. And that's what they heard. And, and so we need to, we need to stick to that.
I was thinking that the budget had to be published in July as, that's when the shoe drops, more or less. Late, no later than August 1st. So I was thinking of this time of April, May and June, and suddenly we're in July. So that's what I was, I was, just by way of explanation, that's what I was, I was, uh, working from.
Understood. And, and Mayor, I would comment, our conversations with the planning next consultants too referenced Lawrence's strategic plan, which clearly gives four tiers. And that fourth tier is where you would go if you're going to cut. They ranked them, they prioritized them. The, the organization knows it, the community knows it, governing body knows it. And, and eventually, that's where we'd like to get with this plan too. It has to prioritize. It has to give an indication to the elected body where the community is at, where the organization is at by way of priority.
Jason, if I can add to that, that, that is something that has come up in our discussions with our community project committee, uh, the, the strategic planning consultants of how we communicate what we're trying to achieve through Crossroads MHK, our strategic planning process. We've done a lot of planning as a community over the last five to 10 years, Kansas State, Regen Reimagined. The, the general public is, is looking to, to understand what it is we're trying to achieve with this effort. And that really, the, the communications and the details we're trying to put out is we are trying to fund an annual budget, we're trying to look for those priorities of our city services, programs, projects, initiatives that we evaluate on an annual basis and bring forth to the city commission to approve.
I just wanna add, well, for me, the, when the strategic plan, part of that is to guide us. But the other part is, you know, we have so many budget sessions, which the members that are involved in the strategic plan, you kinda have to know some of the intricacies involved, such as RCPD, such as libraries, such as, um, payroll, uh, and salary increases and pay study. So I think even if they're in their most realistic manner, the needs and the way the public sees the budget as well as our internal staff sees the budget is gonna be very different than the decisions we have to make for that two, three, four, five-year plan, uh, to make sure we are having that continued, uh, progress, uh, or at least not stagnating and going behind. And sales tax is one of those things, like I said, even before the pandemic, we were not collecting like we were, we should have been. That's always been on the decline. But I think, um, my discussion here and for future budget discussions, uh, the strategic plan is one component of it, but there's just so much more that goes into all of those discussions for this year being an anomaly because of the pandemic, but also as we look into the future and what we see as far as, um, updating everything alone. I'm don't, I don't know how much the community knows when they're plan, working on the strategic plan, all of the things that we are 40 years behind on. The vehicles you just mentioned, and you know, I don't know how much all of those CIPs and all of that get taken into consideration in those plans.
But I do think the strategic plan is, is kind of a guide. The philo- the philosophy of this body is obviously gonna dictate the terms. There, there's no argument there. What I like about the strategic plan is that if the philosophy is, or we need to cut, it gives you a guide. If the philosophy is, we wanna invest more, it also gives you a guide as to what the higher priorities are within the, in the community. So it's there to assist. And I wouldn't say it's to dictate terms, it's mu- much more to assist, uh, you five, you elected folks to make those, those tough calls. So, the calendar, uh, we had as part of the packet. Uh, we do have a lot of internal meetings that, that occur. Uh, we get a lot of CIP and, and budget request forums here in March. Uh, we spend April, uh, meeting with departments and developing that strategy. May, uh, we're obviously back in front of you all at the end of May with our, our first work session. And then we're just pretty much every other Tuesday in front of you with different work sessions and different topics. Uh, when we get into July, a lot of what we've talked about from a general fund perspective i- is, is really behind us. Now we're getting into chamber, now we're getting into EcoDevo and CVB and utilities. Uh, and then we're, we're into August already with, um, first and second readings. So it goes pretty quick. Once we hit June, typically by then, RCPD has their budget. Typically by then, we've talked about the general operating fund of of the city and we're getting into some specialty conversations by that point.
One thing that might change this calendar is Senate Bill 13. Right now, the debate, most everybody that I've heard talk about Senate Bill 13, it is a matter of if it's going to pass. It's what's what's it going to be in it? And so one version has this taken effect this year, which would mean we would have to do the notice to the taxpayers mid-July. So that moves this calendar up substantially if that's the case. Another version has it not kicking until next year. So hopefully that will be the case, but you never know what the legislature is going to do. So that is the one little caveat that may adjust the schedule accordingly.
So what we will have to notice them if we're raising what? The mill levy, the overall budget? We don't have to notify them if the budget's the same as last year, do they?
If the budget is more than the dollar amount the previous year, you have to notice them.
No inflation factor, no?
Which is pretty much automatic, given all our revenue streams from sales tax.
You know, even just from the two tenths and the dedicated revenue sources. It isn't just your property tax funds going up. It's your budget, period.
So even if it's
Mill levy is going to is going to increase the amount, so you have to notify them anyway.
So with the sales tax for the recreation centers, with all of that stuff, if it goes up a dollar?
So we're accumulating about $5 million a year?
2.75 on the sales.
2.75, just in the just in that fund, which we're keeping for cash to pay out at some point. So you're automatically raising, that's what all those cash balance variances are. So that's why we have to budget to hit that target because we anticipate that revenue will be there. And if we we can't exceed that target. So that's part of the most of those funds have those imbalances in them because of those fluctuations in those revenue streams that we know about. And they are intentional savings to add on to that balance.
I want to make one other comment because I think this directly impacts the budget. The levy project, we talked about water funds. We put a surcharge on there. When does that go into effect on the water bills?
So the surcharge went into effect already this year in in the water fund, the wastewater fund and the stormwater fund.
Okay, see, my point is we approved that surcharge, which is not a property tax because it's on your water bill. Some people would call it a hidden property tax. I didn't have a problem voting for that because I see that levy is absolutely critical. If it fails, we lose the city. I mean, it's just that simple because the water department's there and everything's there. And so we had to do that. And so I want to point out that, you know, we have in fact actually raised everybody's cost of living in the town because of the levy project. And that was, you know, one of six we had out there and that shouldn't be forgotten. And and the other thing on strategic outlook, we've talked a great deal about, you know, keeping that sewer plant, water plant and everything working. And the long-term outlook is to in fact increase those water rates each year by a small percentage for, I think, the next five years. And so we've already made some strategic planning which raises it. And I and people like to look at their total cost of living here and we've already committed to that. And 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 that's something I don't want us to lose sight of when we when we start crafting this budget.
Linda Morris, at this point when I am not committing to no tax, no mill levy increase, you push every year. I avoid you every year in the beginning because I want more information. And I don't think my decision is always the same. And so I just want you to know that your your pushing is not it is is what it is. And we have to make independent decisions. So it's not that I'm avoiding what you're saying. I want you to know that I'm going to be making careful and thoughtful decisions as we go and as we and that's what I think people expect us to do. I'm not coming in with a preconceived idea that's of something rigid. So anyway, just to say that.
And it's not preconceived. The problem is when you have staffs briefing on budgets, they have a preconceived notion that they can increase it. And so I just want to counterbalance that. Of course, I've been here 10 years and I've always voted no on the property tax. So that doesn't surprise, I think, the city staff at all because I've been very consistent. I voted no every time except once where we actually lowered it about point one. And I think the majority of the rest of the commission, except for Jared McKee, who voted no also, has always voted to increase the mill levy. I think you've all got a track record of that, except for Mark, hasn't been here then or Aaron, you haven't either. But but basically have voted to increase it.
We held it to zero last year.
Yeah, only because of COVID. That was wonderful.
I'm just saying.
I know you did. I'll give you credit for that.
Exactly right.
But that's the only timeline. So that's why I make I just make that point. That's all.
Generalizations, yeah.
Commissioners, I just want to appreciate your time tonight. Obviously, the budgeting is complex even in a normal year and this is not a normal normal time. So as Jason indicated, is you have questions or thoughts or concerns or need additional information, we we can certainly do that. And, you know, one of the things we do in Citizens Academy, which we've suspended, is we run through these different parameters of all our departments. And so we've been talking about how we might be able to do that and we might do it virtually, but I don't know. So but and that kind of goes for our citizenry too. So there's good information on our website about where we spend our funds. And we just appreciate your time and and commitment and we look forward to working with you through this process.
Yeah, I wanted to just give another shout out. Great work from the Finance Department. I especially like and those of you tuning in, on the City Finance Department page, there's a section there where you can figure out what your property taxes are. There's a little chart there and you put in your your house and the value and it'll break it out and show you clearly what the city portion is, the county portion, the state portion. And it'll do that for residential property and commercial property. And I think that's one of the greatest tools, you know, out there for people to really put this into perspective is what you're what you're paying for and then you can get an idea of what you're getting as a return. So so great work on keeping that thing up to date. I I use it regularly to look at things. It's a fantastic resource. So if we have nothing else, we can actually adjourn, I think. Thank you.